Tonight's meeting of the Clear Lake City Council, Monday, April 3rd, 2023, come to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Need a motion for the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes five zero. Now on to the consent agenda. You have a copy of the minutes from our March 20th, 2023 meeting. We'll also need an approval of the bills and claims, which you also have a copy of. And we'll also move on with a resolution within the consent agenda, which after we get done reading everything here, I believe will require a voice vote, so we'll leave that for the end. Resolution number 23-20. A resolution setting the salaries for appointed officer and employees of the city of Clear Lake for the 2024 fiscal year. Also, the license and permits. Liquor license, Class C retail alcohol license, Gee Joes by the lake, Class C retail alcohol license, Rumors, both of those being renewals. Cigarette permits, Come and Go Number 301 and Number 302, also renewals. Excavators license, McKinnis Excavating, Cooper Excavating, renewals. Tree trimmer license, Malek's Lawn and Tree Service, Hernandez Tree Removal, Cutting Edge Tree Service, KNC Tree Service, once again, renewals. So now, I will ask for a motion on the resolution and the rest of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Dana, seconded by Gary. Any discussion? Okay, we will move on to a voice vote. Mark?
Yes.
Mike, yes. Gary?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
And Dana?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero. Approval of Resolution 2320 and the rest of the consent agenda. Now we move on to the citizens' opportunity to address the council. Please approach the podium, state your name, and your, whatever it is you want to talk about, and please, no more than five minutes. So, I believe, yes. Our guest, our guest. You bet.
Hi, I'm Lori Meacham-Gina, and you made me spell that, so it's L-O-R-I. M-E-A, oh, you got it? Okay. So I'm just here, I'm going to introduce myself, I'm newly elected supervisor for Surga County. I was, so I'm just coming over here to say hi. Been at this now for three months, I have the days counted down, but I won't tell you, no. I'm really enjoying it, I'm really liking it, and it's a great opportunity, and just wanted to come say hi and introduce myself.
Thank you, and welcome. We feel we've got a real good working relationship with the county, and we've had quite a few projects that have involved both levels of government, which have been very successful for both the county and the city of Clear Lake, so.
Yeah, I'm starting to get on some of those, so that's good, that's good too.
You bet. And I've got a real strong suspicion you're getting to know my youngest son fairly well.
Yes, I am.
So, anyway, welcome and thank you for stopping by.
Thanks for having me.
You bet.
Yep.
Any others? Okay, we'll move on to unfinished business. Fortunately, we have none of that, and that brings us to new business. And a rezoning petition for William Yan to rezone parcels 060720100300 and 060725100600 from RS5 Low Density Single Family Residential to RM12 Low Density Multi-Family Residential. I'm sure everyone got the numbers on those parcels.
No, could you repeat those?
Only if you memorize them.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem, city council members. Just take a quick run through the packet on the materials. You'll see the first item there is a site plan from Stubbs Engineering that identifies sort of a conceptual layout for the two parcels that we're talking about for rezoning this evening from RS5 to RM12. The next sheet is just again kind of depicting in a vicinity type map where those two parcels are located, as you can see, located north of 1511 or 20th Street there, roughly about 28 and a half acres apiece. And we've also included a copy of the zoning map, just indicating what the neighboring properties are zoned in that area there. The next sheet, the purple sheet, is an ordinance that would rezone the properties and change the official zoning and land use maps of the city for these two parcels, from RS5 Low Density Single Family Residential to RM12 Low Density Multi-Family Residential. The backside of that is the public notice that was put in the newspaper on March 23rd indicating that tonight would be the time and the place for the public hearing on the proposal to change the zoning classification for these two parcels. And last but not least is the letter from the petitioner requesting the change in zoning from, again, from RS5 to RM12. Just in the ways of background, back at a meeting on February 6th, the council had referred this rezoning petition to the Planning and Zoning Commission for its review and recommendation for those two parcels that Mayor Protem identified here earlier. Two parcels represent roughly 28.49 acres, as I mentioned, they're located just north of 1511 or 20th Street, and the change in zoning would be to change these parcels from RS5 to RM12. The Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed that request at its regular meeting on February 28th and has forwarded its recommendation that the council consider favorably the request by the petitioner. At your meeting on March 6th, then the council set the date for the public hearing, and as I mentioned, prescribed the notice that was published in the newspaper on March 23rd indicating that tonight would be the time and place for the public hearing. So I have not received any written communication regarding the matter prior to the public hearing, but if anyone has any questions of me, I'd be happy to answer those.
Counsel, any questions, comments? I know, but something's acting up here. I guess next, review of the quest, requests by Mr. Yan. Any comments? Bill?
We're in a very formative session. We needed to get this done before we can finish our engineering layout utilities. They should be coming shortly, and then we'll be back to talk to you later. If you might have a question about the north end, that remains the same, so that's still single family.
Okay.
And we designated the first area there a senior housing, although I'll say, we're not sure if we don't let, what do you call a senior housing? So, they'll be smaller flat on grade homes, set up or stuff like that. Anything else?
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Yan, counsel? Okay, thank you. At this point, we will open a public hearing on this particular proposal. So once again, anyone wishing to speak on this, in yea or nay, or whatever, please approach the podium. I guess the bus didn't get here yet, but, so, okay. Moving on, I need a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion by Bennett, seconded by Dana. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion to close the public hearing passes five zero. Now, move on to a motion to approve Ordinance 876, an ordinance amending the official zoning and land use maps of the city to rezone certain properties from RS5 Low Density Single Family Residential to RM12 Low Density Multi-Family Residential. This also being the first reading. So I'll ask for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion by Gary, seconded by Mark. Any discussion, counsel? Okay, none appearing. We will move on to, once again, a voice vote. Mike, yes. Gary?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
And Mark?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero and is duly adopted on the first reading. Okay, we're moving on to B, I believe. We haven't missed anything, have we? All right. Fiscal year 2023 amended and fiscal year 2024 municipal budget proposal. Mr. Schmidt, I'm sure you've tightened this up a little since we had it two weeks ago.
I did, however, there's a lot of people here, so they probably want the full effect.
Most likely.
Although one has snuck out before, so I'll keep it short. Gary gave me eight minutes, Dana gave me 12, so I'll stick to 10. What we are doing tonight, we are conducting the public hearing for the fiscal year 23 amended and the fiscal year 24 budget proposal. So we can go straight to the slides. Total expenditures in fiscal year 2024, total budget is just over 19 million, operating budget close to 11 million, capital budget 7.3, and debt service of $904,000. And there is the breakdown in graph form. Here's just a list of the major capital projects, or some of them that we have going on in the city, so we have the Everybody Plays Park, and that one, the work on that has already started. New fire truck next year, that's an exciting one, a single axle plow truck. Of course, we have Phase 2 of the overlay project, I think they actually started the concrete work on that today. A street resurfacing project, outdoor pickleball basketball facility, new tractor for the park department, so there's just a list of some of our major capital projects. General fund, we went over this, of course, two weeks ago, but projected ending cash balance of 5.7 million, which is 47.5% of our general fund budget, very healthy balance. We also have two reserve fund balances, public safety equipment for 520,000, that's one that we use on fire trucks and items like that, we're actually not going to use that next year. We're going to be able to purchase the fire truck without dipping into that reserve. And then the South Lakeview Drive project, $400,000. Property tax rate for the fiscal year that we're in right now, 2023, and where we rank in Iowa, so there are 103 cities in Iowa with a population over 4,000, and Clear Lake had the fourth lowest city tax rate. So you can see the breakdown with some of the lowers cities there, but then you also see the highest rates, which some of those are double, or a little bit more than double of what Clear Lake has for our city tax rate. Consolidated tax rate, pretty much the same story, Clear Lake has the sixth lowest consolidated tax rate, so your total property tax rate, the breakdown there, and then the, you can see the higher rates there, too, another almost close to double what we have here in Clear When you receive your total tax bill, it does not all go to the city. In fact, 38% of it goes to Clear Lake schools, 33%, so a third of it does go to the city, 20% goes to the county, 5% currently to the Clear Lake Sanitary District, and 4% to This slide compares an actual valuation that we have here in the city, the valuation is $23.3 million, and it shows what that business pays in property taxes. If they were in Mason City at this point, they'd be paying close to 800,000, and in Clear Lake, around 600,000. So a $200,000 annual savings to do business here in Clear Lake due to our property tax This just shows the positive trends over the last 12 years as far as valuation goes within the city. So you can see that assessed valuation in green there has really taken off the last 12 years, so lots of positive growth within the city. This shows the breakdown. Of total taxable value by class, so the largest portion being residential, coming over 70%, next is commercial at 20%. Our proposed tax rate for fiscal year 24 is actually going down, so from the 9.7 number that we talked about earlier to the $9.65 per thousand dollar valuation. So right below there, you see, based on a $200,000 assessed valuation for residential, because of the rollback, the residential rollback is going up a little bit, so the tax bill would increase $4.79, but basically staying flat, and commercial goes down $9, so same, a little bit of a decrease because of our decrease in the tax rate. This is the debt capacity, so you can see in blue there, that's the debt limit growth, so because of our growth in valuation, we have a steady incline there on the blue, and then you see our outstanding debt there, where there's not a steady incline, which is great. So we've been able to maintain a very low outstanding debt number for the end of fiscal year 24. We will be at 3.7%. So again, we talk about many recommend within the state saying between that 60 and 70% number, even all the way up to 80, and there's some cities that far exceed the 80 even. So this is as close to debt-free as you come in the state. Now, that's all we have. Who is timing?
Six and a half minutes.
Okay, good. Six and a half minutes? Thanks, Dana.
That, ladies and gentlemen, was the Reader's Digest version of the Clear Lake City Budget.
Be an encore performance later. That following the meeting.
There you go. Any questions of Creighton Schmidt? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
You bet. Good job, good job. Okay. And I know we have a lot of anxious folks out there in visitor land that will relish the next motion here, but we will now open a public hearing on the budget. Once again, anyone wishing to speak on the budget, please approach the podium, state your name, and tell us why you think it's a good or bad thing. You know, I, I can just imagine the scores of people out there watching on YouTube land and being just amazed by our budget presentations, so thank you out there. Anyway, apparently no one is going to speak at the public hearing, so I need a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. I guess Dana with the motion, Mark with the second. Any discussion, counsel? Once again, no. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Same. All right, that one passes. Now, moving on to the Resolution 2321. A resolution approving the proposed budget amendment for the fiscal year 23 amended and fiscal year 24 proposed budgets for the city of Clear Lake, Iowa. Motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Gary, seconded by Mark. Comments, discussion, counsel? Somebody's got to make a comment, so I guess I will. Once again, I want to thank, and Gary's getting anxious here, so I'll try to speed it up, want to thank the people that put this together. It's not an easy task, and more importantly, it's put together in such a way every year that it works out, and we get a lot done, and, I mean, tremendous amount of bang for our buck in a very challenging economic time, and I, I think, time after time, we've been able to serve the residents and property taxpayers of Clear Lake very well. So I thank everyone involved, and good job. Okay, voice vote. Gary?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero. Clear Lake Police Department Teamsters Local 238 Collective Bargaining Agreement. Review and recommendation by Chief Roth and Creighton Schmidt and anybody else that shows up.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, counsel. Just want to remind you, our current contract at the police department expires July 1 of this year. If you recall, it was a five-year contract, very favorable, and thank you for that, it's kind of unheard of in police departments to have that long of a contract, so that shows a great working relationship with the, with the Teamsters in the city. Just as, there's a really quick timeline, we began negotiations in February with the help of our new legal counsel, labor attorney, Michael Galloway, on the contract. We couldn't come to agreement on a couple of minor points, so we went to mediation in March. A lot of what you see on your attached document, I don't think it's in your packet, I think it's an addition there on the, on your, on the side there. There's a lot of language cleanup, federal and state law updates, we added the MOU terms that we, that the council approved last year to put that into the contract, and of course, the salary and benefits section, that's in the back of that packet, that Creighton can address if you have any specifics on that, but that was a lot of work. Just realistically, it's a, I think it's a win for both sides, I'm biased, of course, but I think both sides were happy with it. I want to thank the Teamsters 238, our PD, union stewards, of course, city administration, Scott and Creighton, and Mike and Aaron from the PD, they put a lot of work into this, and of course, Michael Galloway, and then the federal mediation folks came out and helped too. So a lot of work in this, it really will clean up our contract, I'm very happy with it, and I'll address any questions you have on it, so.
Thank you, sir. Creighton, any comments from the others? Okay, all right. So, I guess I have one question. How many, you can sit there, how many years is this one for?
Five.
Three.
It's a five-year, but reopen or potentially on wages in year 45.
Okay, all right. Thank you. For a moment, I didn't clarify it, but we got there, so.
Hold up two years, move together.
Okay, well, rehearse that before next year. I guess there won't be one next year, so you're safe. All right, good. All right, moving forward here. Let's see, we need a motion to approve Resolution 23-22. A resolution approving and authorizing the Mayor Protem to execute a collective bargaining agreement with the Teamsters Local Number 238 and the Clear Lake Police Department for the fiscal years 2024 through 2028. So, need that motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
All right, motion by Mark, seconded by Dana. Any questions, considerations, discussion, counsel? Okay, we're back to yet another voice vote. Bennett?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero. Item D, Surf District Destination Iowa Music Enrichment Center Project Architectural Services Proposal, Mr. Florrie.
Mayor, I usually speak after every council meeting, let's go how things went, and I'll tell him that Mayor Protem successfully navigated us through a collective bargaining agreement, and his absence avoided a strike by, by all departments.
I do what I can.
Nice word. The yellow sheets in your packet address this item, counsel. This is a proposal from Atura Architecture, based here in Clear Lake, for architectural services for the design of the new Enhanced Music Enrichment Center, that of course will be located at the corner of North Shore Drive and 7th Avenue North. As you know, we've had concept drawings prepared on that by RDG for purposes of our submittal to the Destination Iowa. Create a place-making program through the Iowa Department of Economic Development that basically modeled that structure after the original Art Deco look of the surf ballroom that sat on the lake, Surga, 1933. Ironically, and Austin is here tonight with Atura and is going to review this with you here momentarily, but ironically, 90 years ago, the predecessor firm of Atura was involved in designing not only the surf ballroom and the other ballrooms, but the Fox House as well, so it's kind of an interesting quirk that 90 years later, the same firm would potentially be involved in further architectural services related to this whole Surf District project. So, the, of course, Atura is no stranger, we worked very closely with them on the Wellness Center project that I think was very successful here in Clear Lake, and I think they did a, did a very nice job on that as well. They were the, I thought, put together the best proposal that we received, and of course, it was the, actually the least costly proposal we received as well, so the fee is 7% of what the construction costs are for the project. So, one of, one of the things we had to be mindful of when we were soliciting proposals for this is that, if you recall, a while back, we had adopted a procurement policy that has a number of provisions related to how we go about contracting for services like architectural and engineering and later bidding related to construction services, so, so we had to develop the proposal in response to those requirements that we're subjected to under, under the procurement policy that the council adopted, and so there's a number of federal acts and pieces of legislation that we have to ensure compliance with on this, and Atura has a good, strong background in that. We also are interested in the construction manager at risk bidding alternative, you know, it's new this year in the state of Iowa, alternative to the traditional low bid method of bidding these kinds of vertical projects, so Atura has some real strong background with that, so we were impressed with that, so we're happy to recommend to the council, to award the professional services agreement to Atura Architecture. I don't have anything further in terms of any background before Austin comes to the podium, but I'd be happy to respond to any questions you might have.
Once again, counsel, any questions of Mr. Florrie? You're safe. Austin, welcome.
This one doesn't come up, does it? Good evening, counsel, Mayor Protem and Florrie, appreciate the opportunity. As Scott alluded to, I'll give you a brief update or a brief synopsis of our, of our proposal. As he mentioned, you know, a little history there, we've been around for about 100 years and had the opportunity with Carl Wagner, the founder of our firm, he was the original designer of the surf in '33, and then subsequently designed the Fox House as well as the surf which stands now. Additionally, there's some other buildings in that area, so Witkeys and a few others that we're highly invested in and have a strong desire to continue that, that architect. that we're highly invested in and have a strong desire to continue that architectural history there. So we appreciate the recommendation and a brief summary of our services, and I'd be happy to go into any more of these in further detail, those are in your packet, but pretty straightforward approach. I think the big key for us, particularly in the schematic design phase, which is what we would start with, would be to work seamlessly with RDG and really ensure that the Streetscape project, and the Streetscape project as well as the MEC really work well together, really tell a cohesive story. So I think that's something that would maybe be a little unique out of any other project that you would typically see, there's a close collaboration with that. Likewise, there'd also be whatever firm is selected for the hotel, there'd be an integration with that as well to make sure that all the buildings work well together from a circulation standpoint, from aesthetics, and really just working on enhancing that district. So from there, we propose within our schematic design what we call our True North Study, something that works really well with larger committees and boards when you're trying to tell a story. And this obviously is a good, is a perfect example of really telling a story as far as how we got here, the history of the surf, and the future of what this district hopes to be and what it can do for the community. So that's more or less a documentation process of the project and really exploratory of how we go about making the decisions that we make and working alongside the committee to help make those decisions and coming up with a package result that will, you know, tell that story. Along with that, we also feel like the education piece of this is really important, so within our proposal, you see we kind of, we have a marketing and storytelling, and I think one of the things that came about from meeting with the committee was, you know, there's an education piece here. I think a lot of people are looking at the Destination Iowa Grand and looking at the surf district and trying to understand what's all going into this, how is this going to impact us locally, how is this going to impact us, you know, from a tourism standpoint and everything else, and what's really involved in the MEC. So I think, similar to, if you remember the process through the Wellness Center, a lot of virtual tours and a lot of education pieces there that I think are quick, easy ways of telling that story outside of, you know, having community meetings and things like that, which doesn't mean that you can't have those, it's just, it's a quicker response. And then just going through our standard services, through design development, construction documents, and I think, you know, one thing to note on what Scott had mentioned was the CMR, Construction Manager-at-Risk process, which is new for public use this year. We have had a lot of projects where we've been involved in construction manager-at-risk, obviously, prior to this passing, but we've been involved with two as of now within the public realm that we've helped write proposals for and things like that. So we will be obviously assisting any week that we can, and then obviously working with the construction manager that's chosen from there on out, working through that design development and construction documents with them, and along continuing that same process with RDG, and as well through the bidding and construction administration. So I think, obviously, being local here, construction administration side, just a lot of onsite assistance, being there, answering questions, really making sure that things are followed through with on the construction. And as Florrie mentioned, our proposal is seven percent of construction costs, and that would include all major engineering consultants as well. So that's all I have, I'd be happy to answer any questions or clarify anything for you that you might have.
I was going to mention, Austin, like on the Wellness Center project, the, I guess the marketing pieces that you put together for that, that were displayed on social media, I thought that was a great outreach and opportunity for us to get a lot more community feedback than just what we had within our local work groups and elected officials and that. So very encouraged by your proposal, and, you know, doing that again, I think would be real valuable here as well.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions, council? Doesn't want to hear me anymore. Okay, well, it doesn't appear that we have to have a public hearing on this one, so we're going to just race forward. So I need a motion to approve professional services agreement with Atura Architecture Clear Lake by the city council. So moved.
Second.
By Bennett, seconded by Mark. Any discussion or comments, council? I got to say something again. I did miss the original design by a minus sixteen years, but at least my dad was in Clear Lake High School at that particular point. So anyway, I'm really excited about the nostalgia and the history that could well go into this. Lot of family stories about then teenage parents hanging out at the respective serfs, and yeah, it's just been a giant part of Clear Lake for many years. The only other comment I would like to make before we move on to the vote, in my sixteen years on the council, has a lot to do with Scott and some of the direction we get from him, but we've always, well, not always, but almost always, been very fortunate to work with good people and work with great, excellent firms, and it's always a great bonus when they happen to be local firms. So I'm really happy that this is at least playing out that way, and I'm sure we will get the results we want based on that, so, good job. All right, here we go. Once again, just all-in-favor vote, so all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Once again, motion passes five zero. And Chief of Police's report. Chief Roth.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, council. Just have a couple, just items to brief the council about. Officer Peddledy Samantha will be graduating April twenty-first, which I think is two weeks from now, so we're excited, or two weeks from Friday, so we're very excited to have her back to kind of hit the street and get her field training in before the summer starts. Once she's back, we'll be fully staffed, so we're very excited about that. Our community service officer position was posted, I believe, last week. It does close on Monday. We've had several apps, applications turned in, and we're looking forward to getting that person also hired and started before the events begin. That does close April tenth, which is next Monday. On March twenty-fourth, we had a retirement reception for Officer Dean Anderson after eighteen years of service with the City of Clear Lake and Ventura. Really good turnout, positive remarks on our Facebook post for him, so again, he thanked the city for his time here and he enjoyed it, so it was great, great to see him again. And as you know or may have heard, last week we began testing our outdoor warning sirens for severe weather awareness week, I think all of them worked fine or functioned properly. Just a good time again to remind everybody to sign up for alerts at cityofclearlake.com/alertiowa. Please do that if you haven't, just to be, especially as we kind of head in tomorrow, I believe there's some high winds or something, Jeremy, coming, or maybe snow, I don't know, the plows are still on, so.
I've got a quick question. The alerts we get on the phones and the whatever, how are they generated?
So the weather alerts are generated from the National Weather Service, I believe in Johnston, so they're kind of regionally based, depending on where address you put in there. The local alerts that we have control of, we can actually select Clear Lake or Ventura and just push out our snow ordinances or parking stuff, so the state can control that homeland security, Suragordo County Dispatch can, and then the Weather Service.
Yeah, I was just curious, because after I watched it stop hailing, a few minutes after that, we got an alert that we might have a severe thunderstorm, so I was just curious who was pushing that one out the door.
Yeah, those are automatically done.
Okay, all right, well, just curious, so thank you. Any other questions of the chief? All right, thank you. Mr. Cornberg, Public Works Director.
I guess some construction updates, if you've noticed, a lot of stuff going on east of Eighth. So East Main, crews showed up this morning, started removals on sidewalks. Wix is targeting with good weather, three to four weeks for sidewalks and driveways, pet ramps along Eighth and that stuff, and then wrapping that up with topsoil, fine grading, and sod, so hopefully that three to six, you know, six week by the time we get sod and everything done. I did talk to Jason Peterberg today, he does have a tree planting plan ready to go, so we can, we'll bring that in and talk about that one of these days, so. During East Main construction, roads are closed through traffic, they are going to maintain local traffic for homeowners and driveways as much as possible, obviously there'll be some instances where they're pouring, so homeowners won't be able to get in maybe that day, but they have distributed letters to all those homeowners and then are supposed to be communicating on the days of those pours so that they can be in and out and be ready for it, so.
Just going to add on the trees, we're doing a similar project with the tree planting effort like we did with the earlier phase of Main Avenue, where we directly contact the property owners, and we have an identified list of appropriate street right-of-way trees that we've selected there, and they sort of can kind of take their pick of which trees, if any, they want to have planted out there. So ideally, the more, the better for us, so, you know, we've been successful with that, trying to do that replanting every time we get involved in these large public works projects, so gone very well.
Any questions on East Main? And then the twenty twenty-three street resurfacing project, Division One, which is the concrete patching, curb and gutter, pet ramps, ADA ramps, et cetera, they started on that as well today on Segment One, which is North Twelfth Street, so they're tearing out some of the intersections and whatnot to get those new intersections poured back. They'll be working on that and moving from segment to segment, trying not to have too much torn up at once, so. And then Emerald Edge Street Lighting Project is also, they have all their light bases installed and the majority of the conduit. They begin to plan to begin pulling wire and installing streetlights later this week, so that's going well out there. And then on a couple local notes, as part of our twenty twenty-three budget, we had some money budgeted for grinding on Fourth Avenue South going east from United Rentals. That asphalt road just has some bumps in there, so I've talked to Heartland, got a bid on grinding those, just like kind of speed bumps. And then also the South Fortieth Street approach between the railroad tracks and Fourth Avenue South, if you've ever driven that, that's in really bad shape, so we got a bid on that to mill and overlay just that small section. The mill and overlay was about twelve thousand four hundred dollars, and the grinding was roughly thirteen thousand, I think I had budgeted thirty for the whole project, so the grinding is an hourly thing, and we'll mark those out for them before they go out, just to kind of smooth that road out, so I guess they're heading on, I'll kind of get that booked and ready to go, and hopefully a day or two of getting our crack ceiling project bugged up and ready to go for the spring too, so, just waiting on the last bid.
Are there any discussions with the railroad on Twentieth Street near Seventh Avenue North?
There hasn't been any, but as we've all known, the railroad's fickle to work with, so with us just doing the Buddy Holly one, it's probably a discussion that needs to be brought up, and then, but the way and the speed that they move, it's not necessarily something that'll be done immediately, so.
It's like Joey Chitwood's Thrill Show, you know?
Yeah, it's another one of those that is very tough to maintain.
Okay, I thought I'd ask.
Definitely one to put in the queue, though, it's really rough, but like Jason said, we got involved with Buddy Holly, I think that was about a four or five-year effort there, and so it can be slow working with the railroad, and then, of course, there we had the DOT thrown in for extra good management.
Sure, just a couple of extra bureaucracies.
Yep.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
Creighton?
No report.
No report, good job. Okay, I guess under mayor's report, Chad, Mr. Shrek.
Can I do another report? I'll do a first one, it looks like I'm doing something. But no, thank you, Mayor Protem, council, appreciate the time tonight, as always. Appreciate all your work and all the great things moving forward, it's very exciting stuff, so. Since nobody else mentioned it yet, so I'll steal the thunder, because Mike probably is going to do it, but just want to congratulate the surf on their Iowa Tourism Award, and really cool stuff, awesome recognition for that, amazing organization, and again, more things moving on that tonight to impact the future of the surf and this whole community, so really appreciate their efforts. Also, I guess while I'm mentioning that, I do want to get on your calendars, June twenty-second is looking like our annual meeting for the corridor, that'll be about eleven-thirty to one o'clock, right here at the surf, so going to be going through all of our fun annual things that day. Couple of things quick with our staff, we did hire our workforce specialist, she started last week, Casey Royster is her name, and she's, again, that's a position we're sharing with NIAC, really focused on leading our K through twelve business to school partnerships and programs, and she's already hit the ground running, I think she's going to be a great asset for us, real young and good experience, she's been at Mercy HR, and just really well-organized, good communicator, I think she's going to connect well with students. We had an opportunity this past week to get her introduced at Mason City High School, they had some mock interviews going on with the sophomore class, so that was really great, and we'll be meeting with each of the schools and our partners and workforce to get those things moving forward and continue to build out our programs. Our goal ultimately is to have something at every level, K through twelve, to make sure that we're hitting each school and each one of those grade levels so they know, hey, we have a successful future, successful opportunities for our students long-term right here in North Iowa, so really looking forward to grow that. Also, continue to look for a marketing specialist that'll lead our workforce attraction and recruitment efforts, as well as our communication strategies, web development, video, or ideally somebody with some video ability and a little bit of graphic design, so, you know, that unicorn is out there, I'm sure, and we'll try to find them, but not rushing into it, want to make sure we hire a good person for that, it's going to be a full-time position, certainly pass anybody our way, if you're aware of them, we've had a few good recommendations so far, so hoping to make some interviews and things coming up here very soon, but we'll keep that open until we find the right person, so continue that forward. And then Tim Putnam, formerly of the Papa John Center, is working with us on our investor campaign, which is ongoing right now, from March through June, so he's working on helping us to build some new investor base and hitting some folks that we maybe haven't in the past, so doing that right now as well, so a lot of things in the works. Project activity's been really exciting lately, we've had a lot of warehousing distribution project activities, Scott and I had a call here recently with a really good opportunity for Clear Lake, that'd be a very good fit, I think, so considering some things on that. Also have some smaller warehousing distribution projects in that forty to sixty thousand square foot range, that want to be on I thirty-five, the avenue, so trying to capitalize on those. Renewable fuels continues to be a big opportunity area for Mason City specifically in the industrial park, have a couple of live leads on that one that we've been meeting with regularly, be a good fit over there. EFCO Manufacturing over in Shopco continues to move forward on their project, continue to work with Pritchards on multiple things, including the golf course, but also we're hoping very soon to get updates on the EV funding, that's supposed to be coming along someday soon, we hope. We were told that about six months ago, and they told to wait for the first quarter, we waited for the first quarter, so now we're hoping. Came through the first quarter, we'll hear something more soon on that, to move that forward. And I'm sure you guys have already seen, but SuKup has really made a lot of progress out there, they had their first dryer put through the facility, the old Serta, here in the last couple of weeks, and things are going really well there, they're up to about thirty employees now at that facility, so excited to see what they do there. Also had some good conversations with Nadine, kind of their project manager, special project, she's kind of leading up the Emerald Edge subdivision. I know Scott, Stacy, myself are working with her to put some materials together to help. sell that as the multi-use and residential retail type hotbed they hope it'll be. And I think I've talked with Mr. Yan, appreciate his investment also in housing in the community. I think our goal is to really put those things together that help us attract developers, help attract people and potential retail use cases as we really develop out that area around the interstates and that whole subdivision. So a lot of cool opportunities for us that we're very excited about. Housing continues to be a huge priority, continue to see a lot of success and interest in that area and that realm, so appreciate all the things going on. I know we've got probably three or four groups here in Clear Lake looking at the workforce housing tax credit coming up. It's due in June with the state, so we'll all be putting some materials together for those as well, but a lot of positive things in the works. Any questions for me? Get out of your hair. All right, thanks, guys.
Thanks. And as Chad brought up, the venerable old surf has the spotlight shining on it again with Lori driving the surf bus very well, so great job there. City administrators report.
Just one thing tonight, Your Honor, just wanted to mention that here a while ago, working with RDG, Beth Ann, the mayor, myself, all put together a proposal to the Preserve of Iowa Summit. That's sort of the statewide historic preservation conference. This year is being held in Sioux City. We put a proposal together to highlight the restoration and National Register of Historic Places nomination process for the Clear Lake Seawall Project, and we were selected for that. So this June, we'll be on a panel, making a presentation regarding that. So everyone here is invited to come along, of course, for that. It should be pretty exciting. We've got a slot on Friday morning from nine to ten-thirty. I think Stacy from the chamber is also going to participate, so it'd be a real nice way to showcase the project and the history of Clear Lake Seawall for us. And that's all, again.
Anything else for the good of the order, gang?